Look at it.
Exactly.
All right, we're gonna call this, make sure this thing's on the workshop to order. This is Monday, October 27th, and we will do an invocation. Father, we just thank you, Lord, for us, for the city, for these people, God, and we ask, God, you give us the ability and just lead us, Lord, that we can make good decisions and direction for the city and everything that it represents. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is this pretty much gonna be airport update or we covering anything else?
No, sir, it'll only be about the airport.
All right, you wanna take it away?
First, we'll do some quick introductions before we get started. Starting over here on the right, we have Kevin Canoe with Barge, Michael Cole, and then Keith Shippey. And then sitting up here in the front, we have Matt Sernick with Garver, and then Tim Parsons is here with Liberty Partners, and then Andre Lewis Ken, our Airport Operations Manager is here as well. So we can start with, obviously, we have two points, two things to discuss, main points of the runway, that is, the environmental assessment, and then the actual project itself, and some of the things that have transpired and come up since our last workshop. And so ultimately, it's probably prudent to start with the EA, the planning side, before we get into the project side. So I'll let either Andre or Barge come up and start us on that, where we're at and where we're headed.
Evening, guys. Yeah, I'm Keith Shippey with Barge, and we under contract to complete the EA. Let me give you a little update. Of course, this, I will say, this EA has been challenging. It's had its hurdles, working with the FAA in Orlando, and there's been some design changes along the way with regard to the project. But do you guys have a schedule in front of you? I think we can maybe start with that. But so where we are with the EA, we have a draft EA ready to submit to FAA, and our schedule had that being submitted last Friday. However, currently, the FAA's, they're still trying to work through the Gene Hurley Park and the park closure. That falls under Section 4F. It's a federal statute. Anytime you use federal money, in this case, it's an airport project, if it has any effect on a nearby park or public recreational area, you have to satisfy what they call Section 4F. So what we've been told by the FAA, we've been going back and forth, I know Andre's been working diligently on this, to get them what they need. She had some question, she was looking for some, possibly some historical information from the city that talked about why the park may be closed, if it was due to the airport project or a possible future industrial use. So we were trying to kinda, you know, look at it as a reason for the park maybe being closed was not really due to the airport. But I don't think we could actually, or the city could actually produce any documented documentation to that effect. So it's really in the FAA's hands right now. She told me not to submit the draft EA until she was, could do a little due diligence on her end with regard to the park to see exactly how she wanted to handle it. But as soon as she lets us know it's okay to submit the draft, the, you know, it goes through, you submit a draft, it goes through, FAA has 30 days to review it, they give us comments back, and then we have to address comments, send it back. So there's a back and forth with the EA document itself. And ultimately, the FAA has a new process now with the, with the new administration in Washington, they've kinda changed how the environmental laws are, you have to comply with. So now they actually have to go send it through a legal, their legal review, I think, is a final step with the EA. So as you can see on here, right now, we've got a schedule. And now, this is, like I said, this is, some of this is out of our hands. We know, you know, once we submit it, they'll have time to comment, and we can't really control exactly when they send us comments back. But working with her and getting this schedule right now, we've kinda got tentatively, hopefully, get a final EA sign in June is kinda what, what our schedule is right now. So that's kinda where we are. We've got the draft EA document ready to submit, and just waiting on her to tell us to submit it, it'd go in, the FAA will, like I said, do their review, send comments back to us, we'll address them and go back and forth until we satisfy their comments, which, gonna be honest with you, we've been working on this a while. So we've been sending technical reports and all that already. So she's reviewed some of it, so hopefully, it'd be a streamlined process once we submit the first draft of the report. So.
Just while you're out there.
Yeah.
On the, on the part you mentioned a while ago, you don't have any documentation as to why we wanted that shut down?
Well, I'll, you know, I, I haven't seen, I guess, or anything in, what she was looking for, Mayor, was something in writing saying that the park was being closed, not because of the airport project, but because of another project. Some old council minutes or something is kinda what she was looking for. And I, and I think, you know, I haven't seen anything, but I think that's what she was asking for.
Mr. Mayor, we've, we've gone round and round about this Gene Hurley Park, you know, even predating my time on council.
Right.
And it's always been for industrial development.
Right.
And, and when I came to the council, it was made clear to me, and there's, there's got to be meetings, meeting minutes that indicate this, because it's been, it's been discussed 15 million times that we wanted Gene Hurley shut down and that park relocated, because it sits, sits next to two industrial sites that were Florida-ready sites under FPL.
Sure.
So there's, there should be a mountain of documentation that we should be able to find and rustle up that would indicate that this is not being shut down.
Due to the airport.
However, the problem I see is, we received a recommendation from Barge to shut that down as part of the EA. So now, we've kind of painted ourselves into a corner in terms of the park, and did we shut it down for the, for the airport project and the runway project, or did we shut it down for industrial? It is, it is longstanding and well-established that we were wanting to shut that park down for industrial development outside the fence of the airport. To me, that's well-established.
Yeah. And I think, Councilman Bearbaum, that, that, and that was my understanding, too. She was just looking for documentation and writing to that effect, I guess. It is what she was looking for, something that she could put her hands on, to put in her files.
Okay, but that's, that's, that's extremely vague. And to me, what is it, I understand she wants maybe meeting minutes, but what is it she's looking for in the meeting minutes? Because again, to my point, Mr. Mayor, we have talked about this countless times, about this being an industrial development. So what exactly from the FAA will suffice if we go spend the staff time to find it? And then, the second part of my question is, again, it was y'all's recommendation to shut the park down, and that seems to actually, based on the emails that I've seen, actually triggered this 4F review. Whereas before, if we would have left it alone, we probably might have been able to skate by and say, no, we're not closing that right now, and, and move on with the EA.
Well, for one, it's my understanding, the park had a sunset anyways at a certain, at a certain time. And it wasn't, I don't think it was our recommendation really to close the park. The, the project, the project had, of course, a road kinda, it wasn't gonna, it was going into the park a little bit, you know, the front of the park property, I guess, closest to the runway. But, and, and, and don't, I guess, don't get too hung up on that. I mean, it's not the end-all, be-all with the EA being approved, this, this, you know, we've, you can also do a Section 4F report, which we prepared in case the park did not close. You just have to talk about it, write a report on kinda the effects of the project on the park and any mitigation measures. If you, you know, if you affect something, you know, what are you gonna do to mitigate those effects? So it's not the, it's not the, if you don't have anything, that's fine. She was, I think she was just looking for a little loophole to help speed the process, not, not that, you know.
I'm all for, for finding that.
Right.
And again, my point is, there should be a mountain of that stuff that we should be able to dig up.
My question would be, who have you reached out to to get this documentation so that you could provide it to this EA person?
Yeah, Andre, do you wanna, and Andre, like I said, has been working diligently with, and you can speak to that if you want.
For the record, before I forget the name, McCollum Swinney, is that right, Clay? McCollum Swinney, the, they're the, they were the architects of that, those two industrial parks. One was done on the 22 acres on the west side of Gina Hurley.
Sure.
And one, I don't know how many, how big it was, on the east side over toward the Country Club property. And, but they're the ones who did that full engineering, they were the engineers involved.
For the ready sites. That's my recollection. I could be wrong. They were involved with some part of the ready sites.
Well, if we could get some, like I said, some documents, and you know, I wouldn't have that historical information you guys have, but if we could get that, I could certainly get it over to FAA, and that may, and I think that it would just streamline, it would just kinda, it would help kinda speed up. She wouldn't have to really, I say, see the FAA per se, it would just be a check the box with the 4F, let's move on. Like I said, we've got a draft Section 4F report prepared that would be part of the EA if, like I said, for example, the park was not gonna be closed. We've already gone through that process, but.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you back up for us, and let's kinda go back to the beginning, please, if you'll humor me for a second. We issued a task order for you, you started work, and if I remember, you were here, I can't remember if Mr. Kevin was here, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, Michael, thank you. But I pleaded, I remember pleading with you guys, hey, you know, you're saying 18 months, please, 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 can we get this done faster than that? I vividly remember sitting at this dais, asking you all to do that. Can you kinda start back in November 2023, when the task order was, was issued, which means we would have voted on that October or November of that year. So we're, we're at, we're at 24 months from, from when we originally, this was brought to the council's attention, that we had to review this. So can you explain to me how you worked through that, how you worked through the timeline of the EA, and then realized, when did you realize that you would not be able to reuse the biological assessment? When did this, this 4F, well, I know when the 4F came in, because we amended your contract in January of this year, that was 11, 10 months ago. So can you kind of walk me back through the, the first part of this?
Yeah, and I don't, I apologize, I don't have all the dates in front of me of when everything was done. I will say that in, in working with the FAA, it's just, it seems like it's been, it's just been a slow process. And some of it, you know, I'm not, I'm not putting all the blame on them, I'm just saying that, you know, we submit stuffs to her, it's one person over there, the Orlando ADO office, she's reviewing not only this, but other projects. You know, we send something, she, you know, she may be out of the office for a time, and then she gets back with us with comments, and back, it's been back and forth, back and forth. But we've had the, of course, the biological assessment, then that was based on.
Well, before that, because the VA kinda came up towards the end of, from my recollection, can you kinda back up and just explain to me, you received a task order from us in November 2023. What all did you start working on at that moment in time, and how did it progress from there?
Well.
Very high level.
Yeah, well, I say, you know, initially, it was a justification, it was a justification of project, we were gonna use the original justification that was done back in 16, when the EA was originally started. Then the FAA came up with questions, no, this justification ain't good, it's too old. So we went through round and round with justification, and I said, well, basically, you know, what the FAA know, that justification was not part of our contract, we were, we were gonna use the existing justification. But it turns out, and this is, it turns out, that original justification, there were some issues with it. But to make a long story short, we worked through that process, and they said, okay, we're, we're good, where you're going, you're fine. So that was one thing, justification. And just, just working through, it's, it's like I said, when you're working with.
Okay, so you, you started, you had the justification, then what, what came next?
Probably justification and, and started the VA biological assessment, those special studies, we had noise, we had to go in and update the noise study.
So does that, does that take us from, from November 2023 to, to January? Because we amended your contract for the noise, the VA, and the 4F form in January. So obviously, you guys realized prior to January 2025, so sometime in 2024, what, when, when did that occur that you realized the VA needed to be updated, the 4F, the noise? What, when in that, that?
Councilman Bearbaum, I don't have the exact dates of when that happened, to be honest with you, not, not in front of me, I'd have to go back through. I mean, we've got emails.
Do you have a general, general idea?
It's hard to say, standing here, to be honest with you, I wouldn't.
I'm just, I'm concerned that we're, if we meet this deadline that's in front of us here.
Right.
We'll be 31 months, and we were originally promised 18, and promised faster than that.
Well, like I said, I, I apologize, it didn't happen in 18 months. Like I said, I think there's been some circumstances beyond our control and going through, and with what the FAA's asked for, what we've had to do, it's just, just taken longer than expected.
Mayor?
I'm finished for now.
All right, now, she asked for the floor.
It's okay, go ahead.
All right, go ahead, Dan.
If we scheduled a special meeting to discuss this airport situation at our next city council meeting two weeks from now, would you have all the answers to the questions you've been asked tonight?
I can certainly try to go get the answers.
Who on your team would have those answers that could come here and, and answer them?
Well, I could, we could go, I could go back through a long history of emails and, and a timeline, I guess.
I'm fairly new, so I would expect you to be able to stand here and educate me as a newbie on this.
Yeah, I, I, I said, I just don't have all the dates of exactly when everything happened.
I don't think we want the exact dates, we just want an approximate. So, you know, November 23 was month one, in 18 months, what did we accomplish? Where did we go from the task order to today? I think that's all.
Well, I'll say, from the task order today, we've got a draft EA ready to submit.
How many pages of the draft EA?
Again, I don't have that exact number of pages. I mean, yeah, well, you got, it's that, plus it's the special. We got the VA, we've got the noise study, we've got a Section 4F report, we've got the EA document. I mean, it's a, it's a thick document.
Okay, so my next question is, if we provided you a copy of our minutes showing exactly where Councilman Bearbaum was talking about, as far as the industrial part of it, would that accelerate your progress?
Well, I would just say, again, not to, not to overcomplicate things, but, or get too technical, but what I was getting at with the, with the park, we, we have been told that we're kind of on hold to submit the draft EA until that park, she's satisfied kinda what she's gonna do. She originally thought she could get some information, like I mentioned earlier, so yes, that would be helpful.
If you had that at the next meeting in two weeks, if that's what the council decides to do, if you had that, would that be a big, major help?
I think it would definitely help, yes. Yes, it would. I mean, I'm not saying that's gonna, I mean, it's, we, we still got, like I said, if, if, if you can't, if we don't have anything to produce in writing, we still have a Section 4F report that we, that we have, that will be part of the EA. It just, it just may take the FAA a little, I know there's a public meeting, public hearing, part of, that's part of that Section 4F, so I think it would just streamline things with that information, so it would help, to answer your question.
Okay, I got a couple more questions. Is this government shutdown affecting any of the slowness with the FAA?
Well, I will say this, those guys that we're dealing with, the Jackson, or the Orlando ADO, yes, I think it is affecting. And again, I mentioned earlier, they have a legal, the process has changed a little bit with how they review documents with the FAA. Now they have to send it through legal. I know their legal is on furlough, so I would say, yes, it slowed it down.
Okay, so you're saying that you expect all this to be done by June of '26? And that's six months before the deadline. Are we gonna be able to do anything shovel-ready between now and then? Are we gonna be able to take the hump out of the runway and stuff like that?
Yeah, that design's ongoing with Garver right now, sir.
It is, yeah.
So that doesn't affect this?
No.
Okay.
It will, but that design's ongoing, yes, sir.
So the.
Gee?
Yeah.
Could you stop that noise out there, please?
I think it's in the parking lot.
Thank you.
And, and I'm hoping, and I'm, I'm just, I put this kinda, to me, I wanted to be a little bit conservative with, with, with what you're seeing here. But, you know, like I said, some of this, when we get stuff in the FAA, they, they like to get stuff back in a certain timeframe, but, you know, they, if we're waiting on then, there's nothing, you know, we kinda, we're kind of, our hands are tied, I guess, on their review part, on their review time.
So I guess my last, my last question would be to Tim. Worst-case scenario, we don't have this all done by December 31, '26. And part of the reason that we weren't able to meet that deadline was because of the government shutdown. Is, do you have, can you tell me if there would be any leniency in going beyond that, due to circumstances beyond our control and the government's part?
Trying to figure out what the federal government is going to do with. Councilman, I don't think any of us are preparing for any sort of leniency at this time. I mean, we can always hope for it, but I don't think it would be in the best interest of the city to, to think, hey, we may get an extension, or point, point to the shutdown as a reason for why.
So something that's really gonna calm me down is that this, this EA doesn't have anything to do with moving forward on the runway. Is that correct?
That's, that's not entirely correct.
Go ahead.
So, so the, in order to proceed with construction, we need to have an approved EA. We cannot put a shovel in the ground until we have an EA in our hands. And that is, that's the crux of the issue right now.
Wow.
So, gentlemen, I, I, I want to have a good relationship. That, that's me speaking, right? As one member of the council, I want to have a good relationship. But I find it difficult when we are looking at 31 months on, on what should have been an 18-month open shut in environmental assessment, especially when we thought we had a little bit of a head start with a previous environmental assessment. And I, I don't wanna send you down the rabbit hole of, of, you know, unless my other council members disagree, I don't wanna send you down the rabbit hole of getting every other date into a timeline. I think maybe some generalities would be sufficient. I'm here to have a good working relationship with y'all, but it, but it's, it's very difficult to do that when, when we've, we've paid $170-plus thousand for an environmental assessment, and it's not on time, and it's jeopardizing, to Councilman, to Councilman Cusson's point, an 11-plus-million-dollar project, the, the actual cornerstone expansion of our, our airport. I'm, I'm really, really concerned that this kind of languished for a while, and all of a sudden, it was, oh, we gotta get into gear. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna have a public meeting and public lashing, but I, I'm just, I'm really, really trying hard to understand how we got to this point, and maybe, you know, it spilled milk and we need to move on, but something's not right here. And, and maybe we circle back to that for another meeting, but for now, I think the question that myself and my other fellow council members are asking is, how do we accelerate this? How do we get this done and not wait until June to do it? Some of the, some of the things that I've been advised would be, we can lean on our legislative delegation to maybe help us. And maybe, you know, from what, from their experience, they have some other projects where the Trump administration has, has absolutely fast-tracked some of this type of review for them at other cities, other, uh, projects. So I really think that we need to look at answers to how do we fast-track this? We can come back to the spilled milk later, and get it cleaned up before it sours, but how, how do we, how do we, how do we fix this? How do we get out of this pickle? Amy?
Mr. Mayor, I got three things I need to understand. Just a few months ago, did we not sit here and vote to make sure we weren't in a position like this, to get rid of Gene Hurley Parkway? We knew it needed to be removed. Well, somebody refresh my memory, how long ago was that?
August.
Oh, I'm sorry, August.
We were advised.
And we said, hey, because I sat here and I was being educated on the spot right then and there. Am I accurate with that?
It's August.
Okay, so my next thing is, how much money's at risk right now, between now and December 2026? Because all of these projects depend upon another, this has to be done in a timely fashion for this one to get started, like he said, the shovels in the ground. So I'm very concerned. This is very tight. Councilman Bearbaum's right, y'all are right on target where we have to babysit this every inch of the way if we're gonna not lose how much money we've got at risk that's been poured into, from the state, from the feds, from our, just, I'm very concerned that we've got to, with y'all's, I mean, he's right. I mean, we've hired you all to help us so that we don't get in a predicament, but I'm concerned that we're headed.
Just, just for the sake of the council, Coby, can you give a, kind of a raw figure of what the, the ARPA dollars are?
So the counties was 5.5 million, the city's allocation to this project was 2 million. We've drew, we've drawn on some of that from the county, so probably somewhere around, somewhere around 7.3 million, turns to ARPA money. The other, the other, the other's grant money.
What's in jeopardy for the timeframe?
Oh, for this.
The other is, is grant money with DOT.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Coby, if I can ask, does, does that money have to be spent by that date, or if the project started non-negotiable, and it rolls into that?
My understanding is finished.
Depends on the pot of money, on the specific sum.
Depends on, so it could be obligated on some, and then spent on some?
Correct.
Okay, so to be specific, come December 31st, what is non-negotiable? What has to be spent and completed by then?
I've seen a lot of language that says that funds must be obligated by the end of FY '26, or they will expire in several different places.
Well, you start with the county monies, the county's obligated, the monies does. The question is, do we constitute a sub-recipient under Treasury guidance or not? If we have obligated those funds as a sub-recipient, then that scenario, that would typically be sufficient for ARPA. If we do not constitute a sub-recipient, if we constitute an awardee of their monies, the money's already been spent. The money's already been spent. The county is the one who had to spend it, not us. We're the ones who awarded it. We've just got to make satisfactory reports. So there are two ways you would look at the ARPA money under treasuries, both interim and final guidance. Um, final guidance did not follow through on the interim guidance about sub recipient definitions. So. That's been an open question. For our own ARPA dollars and the ARPA dollars we do, typically it is obligation. However, if the money is obligated and not reasonably expected to be spent for an appropriated, for an appropriated use, that's where we could run into trouble on our own. Terms of DOT money is that's got very, it's going to be a discussion with DOT and it's going to be FAA money. They typically expect to see it obligated as the FAA is general rule, but I'll refer to engineers if they feel differently on how they dealt with it.
Yeah, I was thinking this was ARPA, not FAA money with the runway extension. I guess my, I guess my point is what I'm trying to get at was. Based on this timeline, of course, the project.
For the record, come on.
Oh, sorry. Um, so I guess my point was was based on being obligated. Based on this timeframe, the project will be bid. Um, the money will, I mean, the contractor will be awarded, the project, the the money will be allocated to a low bidder. Prior to December of. And the project may still go a little bit past December, but the money would all be already be obligated, I guess, is my point.
Well, that's contrary to what I understood.
But but I think that's a question I had, I guess.
Yes, sir.
So just a question I had is about being obligated or spent, I guess, if it's obligated, then like I said, it's. The money would definitely be obligated by end of December of twenty six.
So can we, Clay, can we get some sort of legal opinion on that?
We can absolutely go to treasury and get treasury to give us direct guidance on that question. For the ARPA dollars, I don't think we need it on the FAA money.
Because I think that swings the.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But if there's any federal appropriations, that's a different animal. We're just talking about the ARPA money. That's a very easy.
Yeah, I don't think there is any FAA money in this project.
Not on this specific issue, but.
That's right.
But we've had legislative appropriations, got Tim nodding by me. We've got a lot of pots of money involved. That's why I'd be clear. Everyone's ability, we're only talking about ARPA. It's a simple question to treasury about whether we're a sub recipient.
I I think that that swings the pendulum massively because if if treasury comes back and says you awarding the contract and and having. Shovels in the ground is sufficient. Then I think we can all breathe a sigh of relief. If treasury comes back and says, nope, you've got to have it closed out by December twenty twenty six. That's a whole different calculation and in a severe calculation of that.
And it takes a long time for them to respond. So even if he writes that tomorrow, how long is it going to take them to give him an answer?
Our last few.
The better, I.
Our last few inquiries, now it's not been in the last, certainly not during the government shutdown, the last few inquiries. Have been very quick responses, starting with telephone conversations with treasury. We went through this with some of the county's money back in twenty two and received very prompt responses from treasury. And we identified every pot of money. In a single task project, in other words, or do we have monies mixed in, for example. Extending the runway, uh, is is there important, in other words. We're going to have to spend their money at a certain length of time. And it's in combination with money that's not under. Time threads. How are we going to do that?
I mean, the project, uh, because of the. The DOT, so there's four, there are four distinct pots, I guess, two from the same source or three from. So there's a six hundred fifty thousand dollar, what wasn't appropriations, that's a grant now. That's our design, that's DOT. There is another two point one million and change that was the, uh, work plan dollars for the dirt runway. They got moved over to. Uh, this project. And then there's a five and a half million from the county, that's ARPA, and there's a two million from the city, that's ARPA. So that's that, those are the pots of money. In terms of them interrelating, yes. I mean, even that first part, which you said, which I'm sure we'll get to in a minute more on the project side. When you look at, uh, the first seven tasks. Underneath, well, I'm sorry. When you look at all the tasks, there are three things that's got to be done. Uh, DOT is going to require us to relocate the Jean Hurley Road. It's in the destruction free zone. They're going to require us to fix the hump. Um, and then any other, anything else that falls within that zone. So those are the two main things. Maybe, yeah. Um, those pro, those two things alone, the fence, all that, uh, is going to require every bit of DOT's two point one million and some of ARPA. For the particular part of the project.
And that's kind of my question. You've got certain dollars for certain tasks. And we can't just go ahead and use ARPA dollars. For everything and they use that, the rest of it. Right, we can't, we can't mix and match, but.
We were going to, we were going to burn the ARPA first, but DOT come back and told us that we must, their money can only be spent on correcting those. Issues identified within our, uh, yearly annual audits.
So the the road realignment and the fence moving over, it's not a whole lot of area there. So. So we started this conversation whether Jean Hurley is included in this park. I've always viewed it, as you said. Uh, as an industrial park, not necessarily part of the airport project. If it is part of anything to do with airport, it's just a few feet to realign that road. So if that assessment, do they have to include that small section in the assessment?
From the, from my, from when I started over on this project, we have made that very same pitch every single time. I think everyone can attest, when all our calls FAA. Me and Ms. Heather have gone back and forth numerous times. This is not a part of the runway project. We've told, we've, I've told her that over and over again. Uh, we've shown her that in these sketches, that it is not inside the fence. The extent of this runway is not what's causing this part to move. But that's not satisfactory. They want some sort of evidence o- over a timeline, a period of time. Uh, of communication discussions by the governing body, that that's not what it's linked to. If you go back to the EAs from twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, they're connected. Um, so we've, we tried our last year and a half to make that distinction to her, but it's not landing.
And I want to touch on that if we can, I may, whoever was discussing that or has been discussing with the FAA, Mayor, if I may, ask just a couple of questions. And Mayor, for the record, while we're creating minutes here, my recollection is that after. An update we got in April of twenty nineteen, I met with you, Mr. Adams. Um, and Senator Gainor. In Panama City in either late April, early May of twenty nineteen to discuss our options based off what. Uh, we had received from DEP regarding, um, our options. For that park at that time. Does that sound accurate to you?
Yeah.
So what is it they're looking for, I guess? When you say it's not connected, are they saying that we have never looked at repurposing it? Or are they saying that the city's decision to discontinue the use of the park is unrelated there? What, give me an idea of what they're actually looking for, because there are three distinct conversations this city has had over the past seven years regarding this.
Well, it's my understanding that. What they're looking for and she, and I don't have the, I don't have the email she sent, but as far as in writing is. She she was looking for something that did not have the airport and park connected. Looking for something riding, say it was going to be used for an industrial park or another you, that that it was not being, I guess, closed per se because of the airport. That's what she was looking for.
So.
Go ahead.
You got something on her?
Yeah, she's, it's been back and forth with Ms. Heather. So what she wanted was initially, I think this was back in May. Um, a statement from a member of this body or from Kobe that just said that this had nothing to do with airport projects that was provided. We didn't hear anything for several months. Then it came back that we need a detailed timeline. That illustrates clearly that these projects have nothing to do with anything that's ongoing out there at the airport. Basically something that shows it's completely separate. The data she's running off, we did look up old minutes. I have been able to find anything, uh, going back to twenty nineteen that doesn't reference the airport when we speak of relocating Jean Hurley Park. There's never anything in there about closing it, just. Moving. And actually, everything we have, I have stuff highlighted here. Almost everything in here, this starts with Mr. Ryan Adams tenure. Um, it just says. That relocation of Jean Hurley Park for future airport expansion, and that is kind of. Reverberated over and over and over again. I'm not saying it doesn't exist. And again, this is not a nail in the coffin. This was. An open forum of discussion, but what she wants to see is something basically to this effect. Repeated several times that, hey, we're going to close this park or relocate this park in an effort to make that an industrial space or something to that effect.
Or something that is not an airport use?
Yes, and this is recent. This, you know, initially this started off as just a statement, which we provided.
So I want to cover for the record because then it's important that we have this here. So we can go back to April of nineteen, and I found all of this on the city's website, just in my attempt to review this this weekend. So we have a memo from then airport director Ryan Adams on April fifteenth, twenty nineteen to the city council. In which he referenced that the EA, there had been no change since the last report. FAA. Um, was still working to close out the EA by August of twenty nineteen, and the city was still awaiting FAA's response to Jean Hurley Park section four F evaluation. Um, and then under the Jean Hurley Park reorganization plan, which we obviously sent there. Was that FAA ADO was currently reviewing the draft DOT section four F evaluation. On converting park property to transportation use. And there's a litany of airport board minutes around this time. That discussed the need to put DOT dollars on the road to improve Jean Hurley Road. And we were told that we are unable to do so because the property was outside of the airport. So that was why we could not use those monies. So there's a discussion there about the repurposing of it that went on. Um, DEP provided us options in roughly March or April twenty nineteen. Um, that could relate to the city converting the park. Um, and they gave us those four options, which were paying back the acquisition fund, the grant development. Um, paying back the acquisition funds, transferring the site dedication elsewhere. Acquiring a new piece of property to become the Phoenix Springs Recreation Complex. And lastly, we may use an undeveloped piece of property and transfer the restrictions. They gave us four options. That was one distinct conversation. I want everybody here to be very clear that that conversation was at the time about us converting. That shifted to a separate conversation after twenty nineteen. The mayor was obviously part of that conversation. That then led to, okay, what are we going to do with talk? Got a park out there. We're not going to do any of those four things and we are not going to convert. No action occurred to convert to use. That never happened. Um, to do that, it was referred to the tree and beautification committee, from the best I can tell. And it appears that on July second of twenty twenty. Uh, there was a workshop on site between tree and beautification board members for the park. On their September third, twenty twenty meeting, there's no reference to the airport at all. But the workshop notes, because again, it was a workshop, not a formal meeting. States Chair D Owen said he looked at the last, looked at the last meeting. The board looked at Jean Hurley Sports Complex. Staff liaison has spoken to the Parks Department and there is little use for it. It has been rarely used. But remember, Goodchild added that there was some vandalism seen. It appears the notes taken when they were on site out there. Indicated that the city would be able to repurpose the land at Jean Hurley. Into something other than a park without penalties if they cross the twenty twenty four threshold. Old by agreement with the state, uh, that the airport leaders were going to simply wait out. Anything involved with that and let the city decide what to do. So that's clear break. There weren't, there was no airport involvement there. Because the question was, were we going to expand the runway? The answer is we were not. We were going to wait it out. So the discussion then became. From the airport, from the tree and beautification committee. Suggested looking at the sports complex facilities and equipment to see if they could be used to other city parks. Sports complex has tennis courts, basketball goals, picnic tables. I'm going to read the litany of all that. Um, and it was noted that the picnic tables, basketball goals and water spray condition, equipment were not in good shape. The pavilions were made of steel and could be disassembled and reused elsewhere in the city. There were some great myrtle bushes that could be dug, but may require special tools. Quote, it did not look like the sports complex had been used recently, and Chris Mitchell said he would contact the pub, city's public works department. To see if they had any records on applications to use the sports complex, but had not found any with city hall. It did appear as though one or more homeless persons were currently using the facilities. The house on the women's bathroom had been broken with signs someone was using the restrooms actively. As well as a pair of boots and various clothing articles left on the picnic basket, picnic biscuit benches, excuse me, along with water bottles left in the trash barrels. There was ongoing discussion about the city parks would be used and that certain parks seemed to appeal more to persons and their need to reappropriate. Assets from unused parks to those. And that is from the board of this city that is tasked with overseeing those in twenty twenty. Now, does that say that was an industrial park? Absolutely unequivocally, it does not. But that was the city discussing the need to stop using Jean Hurley because it was something that was being misused. And just simply let's let it run out of time and sunset the recreation use. So I don't know if that helps you, but the third comment then goes to something the mayor's worked on for years, which is going back to our EDC. Which was the city's internal economic development committee and marketing of those ready sites, which go well back. And the need to add Jean Hurley to that, which is where the first conversation ever came up about improving Jean Hurley Road with DOT dollars. And the desire was for FAA dollars to make them more attractive industrial sites. So I go in that reverse order, that going all the way back to twenty seventeen, does that sound about right to you, Mayor? Calling your memory on some of that time. Well, yeah, they. Seventeen, eighteen, and that's discussion.
Thirteen is when they first came up, started, and started working on it. Took them about three years.
Mm-hmm. That's what I was thinking, sixteen, yeah. Seventeen is when that next step was. So I I think it's important to understand the original intention there was to merge that in and improve the road. That's where the conversation came in. All the way back to that discussion of FAA dollars and getting told, no, we were not allowed to do so. Um. I can tell you, we have airport advisory minutes, which may not be what you're looking for from November of the same year. Where people had expressed an interest in acquiring Jean Hurley Park in exchange for investment in the airport. Um, and the discussion was the the Jean Hurley Park grant sunsets in twenty twenty four, which is our basis for not following through. So, I mean. Are you going to find one single document where the city said, this is what we're going to do with Jean Hurley Park? Absolutely not, but you're going to find a litany of documents with the city and its various committees. Discuss that it was no longer desired to be used as a recreation facility and we were simply waiting out the time which we required to. Because we had no use for it. Now, I don't know if that's more help.
Certainly, certainly pass that along to to.
And I'll be glad to share all that with you, but all that's on the city's website right now.
The Senator, I mean, the official wife's on that plate. Uh, actually tried to get forgiveness.
That's right.
You know, well before the sunset.
Correct.
And, uh, but. Failed, it didn't work. Uh, but you know, sunset has already come, what's twenty four?
Twenty four.
Twenty four.
Coming on.
So. So and so that was applied through DEP and, uh. So there's record of that. Got to be a record of that. And, uh, the only thing I know that. Had to do with engineering was that there was an overlay. To where there was a boundary, a virtual boundary that actually was south. Of. The road that goes to our hangar.
That's right.
I don't remember what, what, part of that's Jean Hurley and part of it's not.
And that was the two F back in twenty nineteen.
That roadway was within that virtual boundary and they said that we probably have to move it south. And that was the only thing I know where that part interfered with our plans. Was those. Fifty feet or whatever.
And then I similarly would think we could probably provide, now. Again, one of the challenges, but I think we would request you to talk to your representatives of the FAA about this when I say the economic development side. We had the internal EDC at the city. We also had the EDA. I know I personally attended, I believe. Tim, weren't you with us when we had a meeting with representatives? From Space Florida, um, was Greg West here or not allowed? I know General Counsel for Triumph was here and we specifically met on site with the then city manager at the, at Jean Hurley to demonstrate that park. After, because we were in the sunset window, to look at it for an industrial site. With the specific provisions, and I think you could probably get statements from any of these people, that it would not be in defense of the airport.
Yep.
That was the entire concept and the desire was for Jean Hurley, not the ready sites, because of the ability to expand the facility that was being proposed. And Tim, you were there for that one, right? Again, that was not a formal meeting of the city, but we were also under confidentiality. With state agencies at that time that's now lapsed. Still can't name the company at the time, but. That was one of the issues. As soon as this park's gone, we won't. But it would never have been inside the fence. So to be clear, we have all, since that started. We never put it inside the fence because the city would have retained ownership in that scenario. As with any Space Florida grant, that's how it works, public lands, then they allow construction of the building. So. At least to that conversation in twenty three, twenty four. It had nothing to do with the airport. It had to do with bringing an industrial business. I think our EDA director is present there, wasn't he, Tim? I'm getting a lot of head nods from Tim for the record right now. So maybe some of that can help. Yeah, I mean, I think we have representatives who've talked to us from all of these entities.
Dan?
I've got a few questions. One is for you, Clay.
Sure.
Is there anything, when we get to this regular scheduled city?
Is there anything, when we get to the regular scheduled city council meeting after this meeting, is there anything we could do when we get to the part in the agenda where on the regular agenda, so is there anything you want to add or subtract? Is there anything we could add tonight to clean this up a little bit so that there'll be some fresh minutes stating the, the urgency of this?
I, I, I think so. I was just about to make a list and to me, the first few things on my, on the top of my head are get a legal opinion from Treasury on the encumbrance.
Get Treasury guidance, let's don't ask for a legal opinion.
Yes, yes, sir. And then number two, what Clay just gave to us, let's just ask him to put that in some sort of memo from the city attorney and pass that along. And, and then I was going to ask, is there anything else that we can do?
I, I think right now that would.
I don't want to wear you out, but.
Sorry, Mayor. No, that would be great. If we could get, Clay, if you want to put something on letterhead, whatever, something to that effect. Get it to me, I'll certainly pass it along to Heather, the, she's a lady reviewing all this with FAA. And I think she's just looking something, sticking her file that she can kind of cover that this ever comes up. She can say, you know, this is official from the city, that this is the process, this is what they went through. And certainly, I'll certainly pass it along. And, and like I said, this sitting, I want to, you know, if, if she doesn't accept this, whatever, we, it's still, the EA is going to get approved. It's just, it may, she's just told me, I can't, why can I submit the draft until she gets, she's satisfied with what the 4F is? Yeah.
That's been about 2019, that's been the oldest.
Anyways, finish the question.
Yeah, I'm sure we're going to, once you guys respond in a couple of weeks. We'll.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I've got a few more questions. Does the council feel like that this situation warrants having another airport workshop after the next city council, regular city council meeting?
Mayor. So one thing I was going to ask, I spoke with, with Liberty earlier today and we were going through some of this stuff. And one of the things that, that I'd asked was how often are meetings occurring between the engineers, the construction team and everybody else? Because in the past, they've had meetings where the mayor was a part of it, the city manager and at least one council member. I remember Tony was a part of some, something like that in the past. And I was wondering if we felt it would be viable to kick that back off again until this gets, till everything's back on track and we have some comfort like you're feeling? And then put a council member, the mayor, city manager and all on biweekly phone calls with them until, till we get that level of satisfaction.
Okay, they currently have once a month meetings, just like you're saying, that's not a workshop.
Yeah.
But what I want to know is, aside from that, and I wish I had a better way of wording this, but we need to keep the pressure on this. And by keeping the pressure on it, I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a workshop every city council meeting until we find, until we get a little relief like, okay, they've got this. But right now, I don't have the feeling like they've got this. Would y'all be okay with having a, another airport workshop in two weeks?
Well, get ahead, nod, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know that, will we be able to get all the engineers and everybody in the same room every two weeks? Just while I was bringing it about as far as like a Zoom meeting or something.
I don't think the gentleman from Tampa would have to come all the way up here, but if he could appear on Zoom, that would be appreciated. Okay, so I'm, I'm almost done here. I'm sorry, are you barge or garver?
I'm garver.
Okay. So you're dead in the, if, I just want to find out if I heard this right. You're, you're basically dead in the water until the EA is done.
We are not dead in the water. We are working towards the goal of, of trying to get this built by the end of the year right now. So we are currently working on the project and I can give you, if you don't mind, I'll give you guys a quick update on where we stand from a design standpoint on the project. So I'm Matt Saranek, I'm with Garver, thank you for having me here. We, we've been, we've been given notice to proceed on February 2nd with the investigative portion of our development of the project. So at that point in time, we went out and we did all of our survey, our geotechnical work and a few, and our aerial survey associated with the project. And then we were on hold as there's a certain level of risk associated with proceeding with the design before the EA is approved. In August of this year, we were given notice to proceed with the design, understanding that the EA was still in process. So we have since proceeded with that design and we are working towards a 50% design submittal on Wednesday of this week, okay? That design submittal includes several things, the design, it includes the DOT items that Kobe mentioned earlier today. So we have the relocation of the vehicle service road outside of the object free area of the runway. We've actually moved it a little bit further because the airport's layout plan shows a parallel taxiway in that location. So we've shifted it beyond that object free area of that parallel taxiway to make sure that we've got space to build it in the future if that parallel taxiway comes online. It also includes removal of several patches of trees out there that are presenting obstructions to the Part 77 surfaces. Those are protection surfaces that surround the airport, along with the removal of the hump. And those are issues that were identified by the FDOT as needing to occur in order for the operational license to be approved. We've coordinated with the DOT, they're aware of how we are proceeding and we will be submitting those drawings to them, 50% design drawings later this week when they're done and submitted to the, to the city. And at that point, they're going to be satisfied that they'll re-sign the operational license because they see progress moving forward. Beyond that, then there's the extension of the runway and that's a, a few other elements. That's the extension of the runway, the parallel taxiway. It's the removal of part of Gene Hurley Road that's going to be in the RPZ for the runway, along with the construction of a portion of Huckabee Road to provide that connectivity back into that area for the hangars and whatever. So all that stuff is on the exhibit that I believe you guys have in front of you right now. So as I said, we've been operating under the assumption that these funds need to be spent by December 30th. So we've compressed our design schedule and worked with Kobe to establish a drop dead date for design and complete, and start of construction. So right now, as I said, 50% later this week, we're shooting to deliver issued for bid documents in January of this year. Those will be on the street for about 30 days so that contractors can provide pricing, at which point we'll be, come back to the council for approval after we review them. And the idea is that if the EA is done, we would like to start construction in, in the second quarter of next year. That gives us about nine months to construct the project, which we think is more than adequate to deliver everything we deliver by the end of the year. So right now, we are working towards that goal. If we get the EA in time, then we're good. If, if not, then we're going to have to work to compress the construction schedule and see if we can get a contractor to come out here and do the project in six or seven months.
Would you think getting the hump out of the runway is probably the most challenging task you've got?
So, so we have, I, I, there, there's a lot of challenging tasks out there. We've got to get new approaches planned for the runway. I think that's probably one of the hardest things that we're going to have to do. We've initiated correspondence with the FAA and have the project set up in their ADIP program, which is how we start that coordination to get the new approaches for the extended runway. The hump is a challenge. If you go back and look at the, all the planning documents that were done previously, it shows kind of taking the hump and shaving it. And I have with me some exhibits, I can't put them up on the screen right now. Can you pull the, the, the exhibit you have in front of you? I had it up on there earlier.
Are there any utilities under the hump?
So there are, so if I, if I could, I don't know if you guys can see this.
We can see it, we got something out here.
Perfect, okay. I'll point to this one so you guys can see. So at, in the past, the hump removal was right here and it's shown removal of the hump. Okay, and so basically what the plan was, was to go in and shave that hump down. Okay, and the reason why the hump needs to be shaved down is it's a line of sight issue on the runway. So basically FAA has criteria that says that any point on the runway, five feet above the runway, you need to be able to see halfway down the runway, five feet above. And that hump obstructs that view from the end of the runway. So our initial take was to shave it like all the previous documents should. To your point, there are, there's a water line underneath that area, there's a gas line, and I think there's telecom lines that run through that hump. So for us to shave that down, we would need to relocate those, those utilities further below ground. And we have a sub consultant on board to go out and do soft digs to determine the actual depths and help us figure out what we need to do. We have not initiated that yet because that's typically done after we have the design concept that we want. We are actually looking at, we're reading 50% design drawings, you're going to see something different out there. Okay, so we went and took a look at that line of sight issue and what we realized is instead of lowering the hump, we can raise the end of the runway slightly. And that resolves the line of sight issue. So that does a couple of things for us. One, it avoids us impacting the utilities, which is a cost savings measure, right? And number two, by raising that end of the runway, we reduce the limits of runway reconstruction. And if, if we were to recon, if we were to shave the hump down, basically we would have to reduce the runway length to about 2,500 feet, which really impacts the utility of the runway during construction. By raising the end, that construction point is shifted further 800 feet down. So instead of having 2,500 feet, we have 3,300 feet of runway during construction. That makes it, that makes it better for pilots operating our airport. They have more runway, it increases utility, okay? And we are able to accomplish the same goal of eliminating the line of sight issue that's out there on there, out there right now. We went through this with the DOT, they've seen it. And we're going to go through it again in the 50% design to make sure that they're satisfied. But that's the approach that we're taking right now. That doesn't mean we're never going to close the runway down during construction because we are widening it. So we're going to have to close it at some point to do that widening effort. But we think that we can, like I said, save or have 3,300 feet available during construction of the hump correction, along with the extension of the runway.
Okay, any questions, y'all guys can say until later, while we run out of time. Kobe, any, any last comments on this?
No, Mayor, we'll add an item here to the regular agenda.
All right, so we'll be reaching out to everybody after this next meeting to see if you can attend virtually or in person, whatever. Okay. And that'll probably be in our next, next meeting, just beginning to sound.
I'll be able to attend virtually.
Okay.
Do you need me here after the, this next meeting?
I'd like to ask you a question in between meetings, if that's okay? Okay, I'll see you in two weeks.
Could you please leave us your number and your email because I'd like to talk to you before our next meeting.
All right, Dan, I'm going to give us five minutes, okay? All right, we're going to adjourn this meeting and we'll return in five minutes.